Alright guys, we're here, we're live, we're ready to rock, it's Saturday. We're doing our poker coaching stream. We are here with pokercoach.com, our buddy Crazy Six is gonna be calling up in a second here. Log in already to pokercoach.com if you haven't seen this yet. It's your first time to the study session stream, welcome, welcome, welcome. Excellent Point PC in the chat, so that you can sign up for pokercoach.com, get your own free quizzes, kinda see what we're seeing. Me and Crazy Six is gonna be doing this almost every Saturday, last Saturday he was in a wedding. But we did our own, so these are gonna be the new Saturday thing where we come, we get our learn on, we have some coffee, I drink soda. Cheers. Um, yeah, and so if you haven't seen it, this is the pokercoach.com, we do the quizzes here. If you sign up for free, you get 500 quizzes and a bunch of other awesomeness. Um, and the cool thing about it is when you take these quizzes, you get points. You can see here are points that we've taken on the stream so far, and with those points, you unlock other study sessions stuff. And so that's just awesome. It's just totally awesome. Uh, we are gonna kill some time here while we wait for the folks to show up. Wait for our homie Crazy Six to give us a call. And then we'll kick off some of these quizzes. I really like these quizzes too because you watch a little video and then uh you get choices A, B, C, D, and it's really interactive, um, and it kinda feels like, you know, you're out there and you're kinda getting coached by these players, which is, which is cool. My quizzes, uh, I have my own quizzes coming to the site, Crazy Six has his own quizzes coming to the site, they're supposed to be up this weekend. Um, so hopefully that happens, if not, definitely early next week, they will be ready to go. And uh, yeah, that's what we got, that's what we got, waiting for people to come in. Let me bring up the multi-stream, Excellent Point Multi, if you wanna watch me and Sixes both at the same time. So get ready for that, how y'all living, how'd you say, I just said it morning, you guys up partying last night? What's going on out there? What is going on out there? Let me make sure I sent all the places I want to send. Oh, I should edit this. This should be at Crazy Sixes. Safe. Cool, 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 looks we got six viewers coming in so far, welcome, welcome, welcome. We are just getting it together, waiting for our buddy Sixes to give us a call. Give some little message. Where you are. Cool. We were just talking, so I know he's around. It's good, it's good, it's good, who's in the chat? Users in the chat. Six viewers out there. Alright, so anyways, these are the coaches, so these are the quizzes we took so far, we're gonna take these top four here, it looks like, we usually do about two hours or so. Um, in these things, that's usually about four quizzes, cuz we talk them out. And uh, get everyone's opinion and all that stuff, you can see some of the coaches on here. Killer, killer, killers, we got J L, Jonathan Little, Alex with Cheryl, DeSas, Ian Nato, we got Matt Affleck on these things. So you get some good quality coaches, the cool thing too is, we'll give this a look while we're uh, waiting for Sixes to go. Famous, you made it, I'm glad to see you buddy. Um, yeah, so you get your little dashboard here, you can see 560 quizzes, there's 32 different homeworks. Um, they tell you when the next webinar with Jonathan's gonna be right now, or whichever coach is gonna be, I don't think it's always Jonathan. Um, which is cool. Uh, we showed you the quizzes, there's classes here you can take, class on pre-flop, class on post-flop, class on specific hands, technical, I actually mess with these at all. Um, and these look pretty cool, so we're gonna have to do that. Uh, homework challenges, tons, 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 tons of those, little instructional video on how to take them. Current homework assignments, and here's your homework right here, they give you a situation, and you can do your homework in the form. Uh, rewards are the points you get with the coaching stuff, I just earned two stars, look at that, I'm already kicking ass. And with those stars, look, you can buy all these different coaching options, it's pretty dope. So it's kinda cool, it gives you like, it's kinda like a game where you're learning and you're getting better, and you're gaining points, which gives you incentives to get more training contact, which in turn gets you better, and it just steamrolls from there. I don't know what's in the store, my purchases. Click on a product below to access it. Looks like my store is under construction. Jaybird, you out there, you gotta get that shot point. Uh, they got a calendar of events, which is cool, you can see the next webinar is on the 20th. Um, all sorts of tools, pre-flop charts, just on stack sizes, six max, push full charts, range analyzer, in the community, you got discord. Uh, they have this new program that's coming out, applying for backing, which is cool, and so he's gonna apply for, uh, you can apply for backing from pokercoach.com and Jonathan Little. And it's gonna be a wide range of stake sizes and buying levels, and you can sign up and apply for that. Uh, request a patch, in case you're going live and you wanna rep the team, follow on Twitter, follow on YouTube, follow on Facebook, so yeah, it's a really cool site. There's Crazy Sixes. Let's get him. Where is he? There he is.
What's up buddy, sorry I took so long, you know?
No worries, I was just doing a run through on the site.
Yeah, I should've been joining the run through on the site, but uh, we can do a quick one, I think if most of the guys here are familiar, last week, as you can see here from the dashboard, you got a ton of quizzes. 573 total, a bunch of homework, um, the quizzes are added, you know, a few, you know, a couple a week, you know, at least, what did he say, maybe two a day or something?
Um, as far as updating quizzes?
Yeah, 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 I know they add a couple a week.
Yeah, well, I can see since the last stream that I did, they added four, so four this week.
Okay, so four this week, yeah, and uh, I heard ours will be on the site here pretty soon, which will be cool. Um, so that'll be exciting.
Rumor has it they'll be here this weekend?
This weekend, rumor has it, we'll see, right, but uh, yeah, uh, once they're there guys, what, what's cool is you can sign up for free, or decide you can use our link and whatnot. Um, good way to support us for free, then you can get on and take our quizzes and, you know, see how you do since you guys do watch us a lot, so I think it's pretty cool.
If you have Excellent Point PC in my chat or Sixes chat, you'll get the link to go check out the site, and uh, I was always saying like, uh, if you can sign up for the premium version, great, get that value, but if you can't, there's a free version where you get a bunch of free quizzes. And uh, free homework assignments and free content, and if, um, you know, your life can't support the, the premium membership, no problem with that, no, no judgment, no problem, but at least get the free stuff, cuz the content out there is great and costs you nothing.
And I think the number was uh, 20, you get 20 free quizzes, so that's a lot, you know, I think that's, that's, I mean, it, it took us an hour and a half or something to go through four, when we're really trying to think through the situations, so you know, that's, that's a good bit of uh, work, and I certainly think it'll help your game, cuz you know, I think they're fun and very challenging.
Yeah, I agree, I agree a hundred percent. Cool, Famous will be, I, I said hi to you when it was just me, nudist crawled out of bed naked to be here, that's cold, just don't take the cam off, my man. If you get cold, it's okay to take a break and go put some drawers on. Um, you got people in your chat yet, should we give them a second to roll in, or you ready to kick it off?
Yeah, I mean, I probably need a minute, I didn't get to tweet out until uh, it's super late, you know, but we'll give it a few minutes, and either way, I know a lot of people go back and watch the pods, and we'll be here for a while, so um, you know, I think it's, I think it's okay.
Yeah, you bring up a good point too, I record all of these sessions guys, and I put them up on my YouTube channel, um, so if you ever miss a week, uh, you can go back and watch those and feel free to post in the comments there as well. Um, and if there's a question for me, if it's a question for Sixes, I'll make sure he gets it, and uh, you know, we'll be sure to get out there and get some answers for it.
Exactly, exactly. Um, so you've been doing a few more of these quizzes, I don't think I've had time, I was in a wedding and whatnot, so I didn't really have time to bang out too many more, but I see we have four new ones we can test out and do.
Yeah, we'll do these four ones, and it's interesting because um, it's a mix of the coaches too, and it was funny because we realized that like, when we do the Matt Affleck and we do the Jonathan Little quizzes, you know, those guys play a very GTO-ish type style, so they do really well in those quizzes, where it gets really interesting is when you do something like a Sasi and Otto, who's so far into the realm of exploitative, that we were getting crushed in those. And it'll be really interesting because I'm more of a GTO-ish type player myself, and you're more of a super exploitative type player yourself, and so it'll be interesting if you just crush the Sasi and Otto videos.
Well, I wouldn't say I'm more, I think uh, I just understand that the exploitative side a little bit more, you know, that my coach kind of is a very exploitive player, but you know, we work together and we do a lot of the GTO stuff, so it's being able to adapt, but at the stakes we play, I think I lean more towards the exploit because people just don't handle it well. You know, so that's just my opinion of it.
Yeah, I totally agree, and I, I always tell the guys that I coach and the guys that I talk to, like, you have to get the GTO super solid, the GTO-ish, super solid in your head, you gotta really study that, you gotta be able to see the matrix before you can bend the spoon, you know, and go off crazy and start making exploits, right?
Right, right.
Cuz you gotta know where baseline is before you stretch, to kinda know how much of the stretch it is, you know what I mean?
Right, and then I mean, and the cool thing is, you know, the best players in the world are just adapting every single situation, so that's the ultimate though, that's why I try not to lean one way or another too much. Um, but yeah, we have to just constantly be evolving and nice to have a Sasinato in there, you know, to mix up, you know, um, a lot of the GTO and just solid play type styles, cuz this is style works, of course, as well.
Yeah, it's one of those things, one of the coaches I used to have a long time, it said all styles work, you just have to learn how to make them work for you, you know? Whether that's tight or passive or aggressive, you know, I don't even play aggressive because in my mind, it makes it easier for me to figure out where I am in a hand by being aggressive.
Oh yeah, initiative, and a lot of times depending on where the action's from, we're gonna just have, you know, a nice little range advantage for against the blinds or something, but right.
Sure. Yeah, when you're, when you're flatting and you're, and you're check calling, sometimes there's no choice for that, like, you never, you're kinda just pot controlling and making a guess out there with blind, you know, when you're betting, if you get re-raised, now you can kinda start to narrow ranges. Or if you're working off a three bet that you made, you can kinda narrow ranges of what calls and kinda go from there.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Couple of shout outs, JP G in the house, Mad Dog here, what's up guys, good to see you.
Nudist chat revoked, what's up guys, welcome, welcome, getting a few more people in here, which is nice, but um, yeah, if we wanna start, um, you know, I'm kind of uh,
Let's do it.
Yeah, we can do it, so you wanna start with the assessing, assessing that one?
Yeah, yeah, let's kick that one off, I'll play the video, and we noticed that we were a little bit off last time, right, so you just wanna like, I don't know, how do you wanna let me know when you're ready?
I mean, I guess we can do like a quick little countdown or something, I don't know.
I'll send you a message in Skype.
Yeah, as soon as I see the message pop up, I'll do that, but um, yeah, that works.
Okay, alright, playing the quiz now, let's see how this goes.
Alright, great. Oops, my volume's not working, oh yeah, yeah.
It might be the video, cuz I don't hear the volume on mine either.
Yeah, the volume wasn't showing up on mine.
Let me, uh, let me try another quiz real quick and make sure it's not the quiz.
It was bizarre, it didn't even.
Yeah, the JR quiz sounds better. Technical delay, guys, that's what happens when you have a live, no delay stream. Yeah, so I have to turn it way up.
Okay, so, I don't know, hold on one second.
Sorry guys, give us one second. Give Sixes a second here to catch up. Did you get to work, Sixes? Maybe lost Sixes.
No, I'm here, I'm here, I was just uh, playing it back, I didn't wanna, I went in my chat to be able to hear it, I didn't get the sound right away. Um, so what I
Still the volume for me, I think it partly, partially it's the video there.
Yeah, the video was really nullo, I hope you guys could hear it, could you guys hear that okay, I could hear it, um, and what I gathered from that was, he was saying he was the most active at the final table, um, he doesn't have much information on his opponents for the most part. And he was just trying to decide what his options were bet sizing wise, did he wanna go 90, 60, call or fold it? And he gets a hand like this.
What do you think guys out there, you guys just folding, uh, limping, a little bit more than a min raise or three X?
What are you guys' opinion on this chat, if anybody's here, what up, D Pokes and Jaybird just dropped this sub, thank you buddy.
Drop a sub for me too, thank you man, you need to, you need to figure out who you are, you're, you have mixed personalities, Jaybird. Just GTO Twitch name. See, Kaj says he's nitty, so he's just calling to see a flop. Famous says he's mining, so limp into nutmine there.
So you got a limp, um, D Pokes, what do you think?
Oh, mending, mending he says.
Min raising.
68,000 change. Nudist is stopping.
Uh, personally, um, I don't know, what do you think here, I would personally just be making a small raise, cuz that naturally would have been, been doing before. So I wouldn't do anything out of the ordinary, like, all of a sudden three X this particular hand, um, but knowing, I mean, not knowing, but I gather that Sasi and Otto might want the extra fold equity in these spots. Um, kinda really putting a lot of pressure here, he's in a small blind using a larger sizing. Um, you know, it's gonna have a little bit more forward equity, and these guys can't necessarily three bet anything other than an all-in.
Yeah, for me, like, I'm just never open the blind, there's very rare occasions where I'll limp on the button and then I'll limp in the blinds, sure. But if I'm first act and I'm out in the field somewhere, I'm never open limping, I'm always gonna raise and try and at least get the fold right away. Um, I think if we're super deep, um, and super early, 90,000 seems fine, but we don't have to go that big here, we're at a final table, 68,000 seems to be the one for me. We can still put pressure on the big blind and the button and uh, get it done for cheap.
Yeah, that's exactly what I would've done as well, um, I feel like he's gonna go 90, but I'm gonna say 60, just because it's gonna accomplish the same thing as 90. Uh, these guys, he may have a little bit more room to three bet fold, but I don't know if he's necessarily gonna use that with the, with the right kinda range when this guy is shorter than he is. Um, and it really puts him in the danger zone, so I'm gonna say 68 as well.
Let's go get and see what happens.
Okay, so here's my guy, when these guys are at the final table and they're a little freaked out, the worst thing you can do is set up a rejam, that's exactly what they wanna do, they, you don't wanna fold, or they wanna put all their chips in so they can tell everybody they got unlucky, okay? If you make it 90,000, you make it really easy for Darkside and SoTie to jam, whereas if you make it a little bit smaller, uh, I, I think it's a little less likely that the 700 or 800K will go in, I think they'll get a lot of calls, which is great. Uh, I, I obviously he's got like nine, it's gone at eight, it's right, but you probably don't wanna fold, you do have a, it, it until like this lady lots starts fighting with you at this final table, I don't think there's any reason to fold. Uh, so we do go in open, and SoTie goes in, calls, and we get this, we get this flop. Now here on this board, there's 198,554 in the middle, do you wanna check? Do you wanna bet 66,002? Do you wanna bet 95,003, or do you wanna bet 132,370?
Alright, oops.
We're good.
Can you hear me too, you good, alright, nice. Um, yeah, interesting hand, so he has bottom pair, um, he gets a call from the button. Woo. I know we're not, uh, I wouldn't suggest, I think option bet 132 is out of there, in my opinion, for me.
Great.
Um, checking's interesting because it's gonna be really difficult to check call, um, with this particular hang, given that we don't improve, and there's a lot of bad cards that you can just bet twice on, has a decent range advantage. Um, so here, yeah, it's one of these two options, I think I'm betting. I know Toad's checking.
Nope.
Ooh, bet, I like it.
Yeah, I gotta bet, I can't, I can't check bottom pair, if I had a seven with some sort of okay kicker, I would check. Uh, if I had like the ace high flush draw, I would check.
Right.
Um, but with bottom pair, I, I need to, little value, little protection, little, let's take this sucker down and get the hell out of here.
Okay, could have the best hand, yeah, that's where I'm at, I think sizing is interesting here, what do you guys think?
Part of me, well, I hear you in my head here too, like, like, this is the best it's gonna get.
Yep.
Um, so yeah. Um, so we both agree, we think 132,000, what do you guys think out there in the chat? Uh, 66,000, which is uh, third-ish, 95, which is half-ish, we're bombing the shit out of it with 132. We just said 65K.
Yeah, that's about where I'm at.
I think, um,
Maybe the big bet, like a 98K, use some 40, fold equity, have some fold equity right away.
A little mixed between, it's not out there with the 66, uh, I'm a little mixed out there, uh, I think in game I'm probably going 66 as well. Um, part of me thinks too, like, when we go 66, we get so many calls, I guess we could turn this into a little bit of a bluff too, like, if uh, if an ace comes on the turn, what are you doing if a club comes on the turn, are you firing again?
Yeah, 66 is like 33% pot, we're just trying to, I think the, I think what we're trying to do is use our fold equity right away, um, just trying to get his ace high, junk hands, his jack tens, his queen ten hands without a club or some, I mean, well, he's gonna only have suited queens ten hands spots like this, um, so getting some of those kinda combos to fold right away.
Sure.
Maybe under pair, they may just try to set mine, maybe force just fold right away, so I think this is what that bet is gonna try to accomplish, and it doesn't really matter if we want, use one of these sizing, the same range continues. So if we're just trying to use that fold equity, maybe we just use 66.
Sure, so when you get called, what turn cards are you barreling and what turn cards are you, just give me that one?
Well, I think obviously an ace is gonna be very good for our range, um, you know, uh, high cards are gonna be pretty good, obviously a two, a three are gonna be very good barrel cards as well. Um, some interesting cards, maybe like a queen, um, I guess we're gonna have a lot of king queens, but he's gonna have some king queen in his call range, so 66K, everybody says in my chat as well, yeah.
Everyone says 66K too, I'm just thinking like, am I gonna, cuz I feel like when I barrel here on the turn, just thinking down the road, like, I'm gonna barrel like all clubs, an ace. Um, obviously a five or six, I would almost barrel like any card above seven as well. Cuz like, we could still get, this is a flat pot, right, so we could still get like eights and nines and tens to fold, maybe jacks play passively to fold if we barrel twice.
Well, you just, Sasinato said in his analysis there, he didn't think those hands would be flatting, he thought they would be three betting, yeah, yeah, at this point, he just thought they, he thought those hands wouldn't really be in that range pretty.
So you think he's gonna fire once a lot because those hands aren't in the range?
Right.
Alright, cool.
But I mean, I'm, I guess, I don't, that's kinda what my assumption is, so.
Makes sense.
I don't know, um.
Let's do it, 66K seems like the bet, everyone kind of agrees, uh, Jaybird says with this hand, I think it'll be checking most turns, yeah, that's what we're saying, that's what it's awesome with, we're assuming with Sasi and Otto, I'm saying. Martin, what's up man, good morning. Alright, 66K, ready to go?
That's what I feel like, I mean, if you got a different one.
No, no, that's where I'm leaning, that's where everyone in chat.
Oh.
I was being double zapped, okay, let's find out. Ooh, he likes the big bet.
Okay, so I, I constructed a range, I think it's calling us here pre-flop, so let's say like the suited aces just don't feel great about getting it in, uh, just the suited kings, they're like really good suited broadways, he, he knows he can't fold, otherwise he's just getting run over. Uh, and ace queen probably would've gotten in, so let's get rid of that, and uh, but like ace jack ace ten feels kinda goofy from 27X to get in, especially with a shorter stack there. Nines is probably getting it in, I'd say eights too, just because those are not firm enough hands, now you'll notice most of this range is ace high, right? Your goal, now, here, here's something that took me a really long time to learn at Pro Returners. At the final table, everybody starts wor- worrying that they're going to embarrass themselves sometimes. Even if nobody can see their hand. If you got one third pot, they fold there, they know everybody on the rail just saw them fold to a third pot. And if you bet a half pot, and let's say they have ace of clubs, ten of diamonds, they feel like I should be doing something here, right? Or let's say they have queen jack of diamonds, they, they'll feel like I have to do something here, if you bet two thirds pot, how, how often does that need to work? If you bet two thirds pot, that needs to work about 40% of the time, so he needs to defend what? 60% of the time, now, let's actually take a look at the bet size here, it's a little bit bigger than that, so it's a, let's figure out the actual numbers, so we're risking 132,370 to win 330,924, we'll come back into our stack if we're correct here, so our bet needs to work, okay, it was exactly two thirds, 40% of the time. Which means he needs to defend with 60% of hands, if you can just get him to fold the queen jacks, the ace tens and all that, he's defending about 54% of the time, that's if he even calls you with all these uh fours, threes and twos, which means you get to fold about 64, uh, excuse me, 46% of the time, so you're doing right there, now you might say, I flopped a five. Well, should, shouldn't I be trying to get that to showdown, number one, you're out of position, it's gonna be very difficult to get that to showdown, number two, uh, what cards are bad for you, always ask yourself what cards are bad for you. Whenever you wanna pot control, so let's say you're in position and the board comes ace king five, and you have king queen, uh, it, it's an ace king five rainbow board, that's a very safe time to check back, because there's not really that many cards that are bad for you. Here, the cards that are bad for you are a four, an eight, uh, a nine, a ten, a jack, a queen, and a ace, a club. None of those are good for you, also, when you're out of position, you're on the flop and you're checking and you want it, uh, you, whenever you're checking with a weak pair out of position, ask yourself what do I want to have happen, and what percentage of the time is that gonna happen, let, let me put it this way, you wanna call like once, right? But you don't wanna call twice, so let's say he bets the flop, you call. So on the turn, let's just pray it's one, none of these cards are bad. How often is the turn gonna go check, check, and the river's gonna go check, check, and neither of those two cards are gonna be bad for you? I, I think it's a very low percentage of the time. Now, if you're playing against guys who are a little bit more logical, I, I think you could check here and maybe read them down. Uh, but if you're at a final table with uh, again, these guys again don't wanna look stupid, so if you give them a green light, they might run through, and they might not have done it the entire tournament, so I think it's much better to just turn your hand into a bet of a bluff and accept that, yeah, whatever. Yeah, he, he did.
You good though?
I'm good.
Alright.
So that's really interesting, I think uh, uh, let me uh,
He went straight to the exploitative side, kind of like, it, and it happened there, like, he's just talking about like the differences between players not wanting to look stupid. You know, and wanting, in essentially folding out everything but the top of their range, is kinda what I gathered from this bet, you know? Because they're essentially just gonna, they're never gonna be calling like pocket eights in this spot, or he's not, they're not gonna have eights, but um, pretty much just their best draws in king, king X.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things where like, I mean, one thing that sets out to me is that if we go, yeah, sorry, fix that, if we go super big like this, then yeah, we limit his range to only things that beat us to call. So obviously never firing turn, I think when we decide to bet small or check, then we're forced to call a turn bet, and a lot of the time, a lot of the time, or maybe barrel twice because they bet small, um, and so the range of hands that are calling us are gonna be wider.
Right.
Um, but yeah, uh, that's a really interesting one. He just ha- like, I almost never do that with bottom pair here, just hammer it. And I'm the big bet guy.
No, it just, it, it feels interesting, um, I. Yeah, I just think we can get away with double barreling in some cases, some, some good turn cards more often, but you know, he makes some good points, um, you know, just using this. Very big sizing, shutting this shit down right away and taking control of the pot, turning it into a bluff. And if we ever hit a six or a five in the case, when they do call. We're likely gonna stack them unless they have some nut flush draw, they decide not to jam or something, you know?
Sure, and it's funny like, you know, in a, in a bunch of ways, this makes it easier to play this way, right? Because when you go small, now I said, yeah, I'm betting any club, I'm betting an ace, I'm betting like any card.
At this point, you're just done.
In here, we just, yeah, bang, done, call, over, see you later.
Yeah, 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 so we both got the same here, I mean, it's, it's really difficult to, I, I really don't take that line, maybe enough in these kind of spots. But I think when we are gonna just change it up from the middle of the tournament or mix it up, these are the spots where uh, people are gonna give you the most honest responses when we make a big, big bet here, like. Uh, if he ever did flat something like po- when, when he does flat pocket sixes or something like that, or his ace jacks, things like that, they're just instantly done with it, you know? Yep, gone. Any kind of seven X though, yeah.
And we were talking about this right before the stream started, how like, you know, the mad athletic of the JL quizzes are, are in some ways a little easier for us to figure out, and the Assassin Nato ones are always interesting and kind of tweak your brain.
Yeah, that's what I like, you know, throwing those curveballs out there and doing, yeah, it, it makes him very hard to play against, you know, in those kind of situations. Um, because he's probably gonna use his size as well with some of the top parts of his range, you know, his best nut flush draws and his king, king X, some king X hands.
Interesting, like what king X hands? The worst of the king X hands?
I mean.
Cause I feel like I would never do that with a king. Good kicker, I'm betting. And I would go large, eh, maybe I would go large on the five-seven club combo. Cause there's a lot of draws out there.
Yeah, I mean, and then if you have like maybe king, queen here and they never have ace, king, you just try to stack king, jack.
Sure, I would bet the big ones.
You're trying to stack his flush draws and things like that, you know? Cause he's most likely always betting his ace, king, but his hands like king, jack suited and king ten suited. May just decide to stack off in some cases, or at least call one massive size back, as well as all the same kind of flush draw hands.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think with my value kings, I would bet big and with my weaker kings, king shit kicker, I would check back to have some balance and also to not value tell myself against better king X.
Right.
Cool. That one's done, yeah, that was it, two-part quiz.
Yeah, two-part quiz, interesting. Alright, back to the dashboard, back to the quizzes.
On the JLs?
On the JLs, uh, what is this? Cool. Alright, so already he's got six-three of diamonds, I like this.
It's starting off right.
I like this hand already, so this should be good.
Let's play this video.
Alright.
Here we have the six-three suited. In the big blind facing a min raise from a fifty big blind stack, a very good world-class loose aggressive kid. And everyone folds to me. Should we fold? Call, re-raise to eleven thousand five hundred, or re-raise to fourteen thousand five hundred?
Super sweet and easy, defending the big.
Alright. So, fold, call, raise to eleven-five or raise to fourteen-five?
Chat says fourteen-five or fold?
Oh, we never folded.
Famous always says call.
So, I mean, I'm more of the fourteen-five or call school.
Uh, yeah, Snoss came out with fourteen-five or fold, we got one call and they got about sixteen people who didn't say shit. Get out there and, uh, we're right out there and say call.
Don't be shy, don't be shy, guys, switch your opinion.
I don't wanna say there's no wrong answers, cause there's definitely wrong answers, but we won't judge anyone.
Yeah, I mean, and you learn from it, I mean, how many times have we done hand history reviews together and we get, we laugh at each other, like, what the hell are you doing?
Do you have it out there, pure call? I am at a pure call with the suited one. Um, myself. I would be three betting a lot of hands from here too, cause this is my sweet, 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 sweet spot. But, uh, not the suited one, like a suited junk like this, we're getting too good of a price just to call.
Well, I think this is a very interesting one, I kind of wanna make it, uh, fourteen-five.
Oh, controversy.
Yeah, I think I wanna make this fourteen-five versus a good lag, it's good to have a polarized three batting range, we don't need to just be strong linear.
Like I said, I'm feeling a lot of hands here. If I had ace it off, I would consider three betting here.
Yeah, with the blockers and, and such like that, but I think this, uh, I kind of wanna say three bet. Uh, and it feels, it feels out of line as hell, but maybe, I mean, naturally I'm calling a lot, but I kind of wanna three bet.
Just gonna warn you, me and Justin are just flating here, he sent some in my chat already.
I know, I'm always.
You don't do good when we gang up against you.
I'm like over. Oh, shoot, what up Protron, thank you for that follow, buddy.
Uh, Famous, I like fourteen-five better than eleven-five, just my fold equity, not playing out of position, I like my best. Uh, yes, agreed, I think we are out of position, we should definitely go bigger. If we were in position and for some reason decided to three bet this, eleven-five is totally cool. Um, but out of position, I agree, we should go bigger.
Yeah, I'm gonna go fourteen-five.
Oh, I guess we're calling. We got one fourteen-five, one, two calls. Nuda says he's got eleven-five or call, so he's fifty-fifty, three calls, alright, we're going call.
Uh, they're going call, what do you, anybody in my chat have an opinion, one time for the one time?
I'll wait, I'll wait, let me know when you're ready.
Somebody.
We won't cheat.
Fourteen-five, call, what do you guys think? Here are our options. Oh gosh, one of my kids are crying.
That's okay.
Or maybe they're pretending crying. I think they're playing a game, let's just go with that.
I just tied mine out back to a tree and I checked out a couple of hours, so, drinking a bowl of water. It's not hot in Vegas yet, so it's cool.
Alright, well, yeah, I'm just gonna say fourteen-five.
Oh, here's where we find out. This is where these things happen.
This is where, yeah.
Alright, Tito, let's see what happens, we're cooking call, gonna play the video.
Yep, I'm pausing, I mean, muting.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise and there's an anti in play, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward. You want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two and a half or three big blind raise, that's when you can start folding out some stuff, maybe not six-three suited, but some stuff like, um. Slightly, slightly weaker hands like five, four offsuit, maybe you can fold for a two and a half big blind raise or six-two suited you can fold for that size, but a six-three suited is kind of decent, I mean, obviously it's not great, but it's acceptable. If you are gonna re-raise here as a bluff, which is, you know, also okay. You should be re-raising rather big to fourteen thousand five hundred, you don't wanna make it eleven thousand five hundred because then your opponent's going to call every time, assuming your opponent's decent, which our opponent is, due to his great pot odds and position. So I call, now I'm gonna be checking pretty much every flop. There are some very middle connected cardboard that I will consider leading on when I have the nuts or two pair or a straight draw. But queen seven-five is not one of them, and you're gonna find that those flops don't come around very often at all anyway. So I check, and now my opponent bets four thousand into the twelve thousand four hundred pot on queen seven-five, one diamond, two spades. Should we fold? Call, raise to twelve thousand, or raise to twenty thousand?
Alright, I bombed that one, but that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, my first thought was, ah, and then now.
That's funny, yeah, now we're, that's hilarious.
You didn't see my stream, did you?
No.
I was doing the dance.
Oh, you got me, you, you were, you were stunting on me, he was stunting on me, guys.
We getting ten dollars, To, I mean, here it comes. Alright, cool, so this is a weird spot for me personally, uh, guys, get it out there in chat, Famous says twelve K here. Uh, he wants to pop it, anyone else? Get him out there while I say my little piece. For me, this is a weird spot because I love the check raise here. Um, but I think I would go somewhere in between twelve and twenty K for me, like, for me it would be thirteen-five, like fourteen, something like that. I don't wanna go twelve, cause I feel like we're out of position, we should go slightly larger. And I don't wanna go twenty because I'm scared and that's a lot of chips.
Yeah, I think I'm just going twelve here.
If I have to choose, I'm gonna choose twelve.
Yeah, I mean, between twelve and twenty, I like twelve better, right, like. It just feels like naturally a better size, so when he does come over the top, we're just gonna, when he does just have queen X, you know, or the top of his range, he wants to come over the top with, we're just gonna lose less. Where here, he's practically just gonna be c-betting very wide, um. And we have a lot of hands to kind of connect with this board we can go with, so he's just gonna be c-betting so many ace highs here. Hands like that, uh, that we should just be che- king jacks, you know, hands like that. King ten, king nine, gonna be c-betting this, hands with no showdown value. So, yeah.
I have a gut instinct that because this is a li- a really, really world-class lag guy, that he might go bigger and go twenty. Just to shut it the fuck down, kind of like with Assassin Nato in the quiz before, I. But like, I have this giant gut instinct that is telling me that he's gonna say twenty. I also like twenty K, looks more nutted, take it down right now and agree with the loose laggy kid, with three to one, like, we three exit. I guess he's just folding all his junk and he's coming along with all the spade draws and the queen no matter what, right?
Yeah, like no matter what, um, so this would just be allow him to call with some worse hands, we have a lot of good double barrel cards. So maybe a hand like eights and nines and tens that he may c-bet in this spot. Um, although a good world-class cat, uh, player might just check back some of those hands, but yeah, some of the hands is just Mike Coggon have a hard time on a lot of turns, so I don't think we can check call, I think folding is too weak, would've got a chat, I would never fold. So I'm always just check, isn't, yeah, and a backdoor, uh, diamond draw as well, we can't fold, so. Uh, let's say twelve.
Uh, Cloud says maybe calling and raising the turn? Yeah, um, I mean, raising any turn, Cloud? Cause check, call, check, raise is a strong line, I don't know that I would.
Do you think when we check raise, he could put us on a lot of draws and then just come over the top and we don't even? Can we ever just call here and then he shuts down on some turns, plays kind of honestly on like spades, we could turn our hand into a bluff? Uh, we would be calling some of our queen X, this is interesting.
Uh, Jaybird says hijack is too short to go twenty in his opinion, uh, we're super deep, perhaps five X could be possible with three X is much better. That's interesting, um, Jaybird, I'm kind of on the same line, and then the other side of me is when, when Six has just talked about how he could just come over the top, thinking we have a lot of draws, much harder for him to do that if we go twenty. Now he can't just say, oh, I'm gonna come over the top of some bullshit, right? He's gotta have some sort of equity.
So we got Willis here in the chat saying he would just call, and how many turns can he lead on now if we do raise?
King, queen, ace, spade, decent amount.
Yeah. I mean, how many ter- if we raise to twelve K, he just calls, how many turns can we just lead?
We have to lead all, like, almost all of them.
I mean, so we can still keep the two pairs, the sets in our range as well as the draws?
Yeah, and we can, we can put pressure on his stack, he's got forty-six bids, right? So if we go twelve here. Twenty-four plus the sixteen in there, thirty-six-ish or so in the pot, and then we go another like. Trying to think of what he has, twenty, and then he's gonna be jamming turns, so it's gonna get weird on his stack side.
Yeah, but, uh, I think, uh, it's making a good point, kind of swaying me, I was twelve at first, now. If we do call here, there's a lot of bad cards that he can't just barrel on, um, hmm. Interesting, I mean, one of these two options for me. Call or twelve, yeah, twelve, twenty's too big.
Um, I see a lot of twelve K in the chat. So I think we're gonna go twelve here, as a team, I have a sneak exhibition, it's twenty.
I'm already getting destroyed here, Willis, should I go twelve, should I go, I've already, uh, I'm already down at a point count here, should I, should we go call? Just to play the contrarian?
You're leveling, you're leveling.
I was leveling myself. I've already leveled myself on the fourteen-five, maybe play contrarian here and say call, cause I can see some merit, but, uh. Yeah, I know we don't, I know we don't fold, I'm gonna say call.
Alright, cool, so, uh, play the video.
Alright, doing it.
This is a pretty interesting spot, because our opponent used such a small bet size, which kind of implies he's betting with his whole range. If our opponent used a bigger sizing, I think we definitely need to raise. And that's just because we won't be getting nearly as good of immediate pot odds. Here though, calling actually does become a reasonable option, if our opponent uses a smaller bet size like three thousand or the minimum, two thousand. Then calling becomes pretty sweet because we're almost getting the right price, right? To draw to our gut shot plus, um, backdoor flush draw, and you may say, well. You may still lose even if you get a four, if your opponent has this better straight or if it's a four spade, you're gonna flush. Like, yeah, sure, but you have to understand that you need to get in there and battle a little bit if, if you are gonna be defending rather wide. If you defend super wide or even kind of wide and then just checkfold every time you have gut shot spray draws. You're just gonna end up folding way too much and we don't wanna get run over. So, we need either call or raise, but I think given the four thousand bets. And I know my opponent likes to continuation bet a decent amount, I think we just need to go ahead and raise and then look to continue betting on a lot of spade turns. And any of the turns that complete any of the straights. Like if the turn is a three, I think I'm gonna keep betting. If it's a four, well, I have the nuts, well, effectively nuts, so I'm gonna keep betting. If it's an eight, I will definitely keep betting. If it's a nine, I'll keep betting, so as you see, we're, we're looking to continue bluffing on a lot of turns when we check raise. This is not a new call though, and it's rough calling when you're out of position, I think this is probably just a bit of a mistake. Um, because like, how are you gonna win this hand, right? If, if you're check calling, you're pretty much looking to check, raise the turn. Or leads in turns, and that's always a whole lot of fun when you have pretty much the not low. Turns a five spades, should we check? Bet six thousand, bet twelve thousand, or bet eighteen thousand?
Check our next stream here. Ready?
Alright, yeah, we're good.
Cool, uh, interesting spot for Cloud here, uh, Cloud, he even mentioned like checking and then check raising turn gets a little awkward. It's kind of funny you did that, uh, board parrot after we check. Call, now we get to lead, says Jaybird, he's getting cray cray.
Absolutely leading. Um, one of these two sizings, right?
Damn, like, I never am in this spot, I'm, I don't know. Um, interesting spot too, I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too, a lot of times, the hands we want to float with. Like this one, are better as, as raises. So this kind of falls in that category, uh, Marlon says he's done with his hand, I think we, we gotta, we gotta sell this, we're already here.
Oh, we called this, that's right, yeah, we didn't check raise, my son came down, I had to mute my mic, but yeah, oh, we can't, leading out here. This does change range advantage quite drastically, I, I would, I mean, I've been wrong every single time here, so I kind of wanna lead out. Kind of wanna lead in this spot. Board pairs, we have more fives in our range, we have flush draws we call with. Um, yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm about that lead life right now.
I think a lead is really an interesting spot here, um, Justin agrees with you. Um, I think a lead, I wouldn't jam here Marlon, because then, like, we're only getting called, but like. I guess we have six high, so it's not like we can't fold out better, cause literally all his junk is better. Um, but there's twenty K out there and he's got ninety K in his stack, like, I'm not jamming effectively four X pot. Um, the lead here is super sexy, I never do it, uh, interesting, I think he may have given it away a little bit, right? Cause he said in the video, a lot of times when you float here, you're gonna plan to check raise a lot of turns, I think this is an interesting turn to check raise. Cause I think it's a good card for him to barrel when he's a loose aggressive.
Yeah, I mean, we start, I, I don't know, we start building a pretty big pot, um, but at the same time, so much of his range. It just has to fold, right?
He's probably gonna bet on the large sided rep it, I would say, so twelve K I think is what he would kind of bet. Which if we were gonna raise that, he would have seventy K in his stack, we're gonna raise to like thirty-ish. And then have to fold when it's a min jam, like that gets ugly.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be, I don't think we can.
So maybe for that reason, the donk lead is better. Hey, what's up Evolution, thanks for hanging out, buddy. I'm amazed I didn't already have a follow for you, brother, sorry it took this long. Cloud says if he bets on the larger side, they can't, here, can't we say probably hit the flush? Cloud says if he bets on larger side, they can't hear, can't we say probably hit the flush? I think that I would bet. On a larger side here because I'm a little bit of a loose aggressive player, that I would bet on larger side here to, for exactly that reason, to sell the fact that I had to flush. And then fold, because I'm gonna force my opponent to have a flush.
Yeah, I'm betting, uh, I think I'm just gonna lead these spots when range advantage changed so drastically here, where we have flushes, we have. Fives, we have houses, um, and he's, uh, even some of his queen X, worst pairs. Um, we're gonna have a hard time continuing.
Yeah, yeah, uh, famous says hard to rep much when we lead here, the problem is, is like, we lead like a five, yeah, I'm sorry, the problem is, is when he C bets here. And then we check, I think he's betting a lot as a loose aggressive, and he's got a lot of hands that can't stand. A, a lead here, right? Um, all of his junk beats us. So the lead makes it super tough, if we can get ace high, king high to fold, jack high to fold.
Oh, it's amazing, right? I mean, some of his pairs, like pocket, pocket eights and. You know, without the eight of spades, pocket nines or something like that, or in a very difficult spot.
Giving him value, I said eight high still beats us.
Yeah, eight high still beating us, like all those pairs that, you know, would bet for protection on the flop like this are now in a very difficult spot. Um, he will, may still call with like a handle like the ace of spades, but, uh, unimproved, those hands are gonna have a hard time continuing when we bet twice.
Yeah, I really don't know, I feel like. God, will we ever lead here with the flush though? Like, I'm never leading here with the flush.
Some of your flushes might want to, um, but yeah, uh, not, not typically, I mean, I guess we should be.
Cloud says if, if, uh, I say bet large here is what Cloud says. I really don't know, as played.
I'm gonna say twelve, what do you got? Check?
I'm gonna go with what the chat says and they aren't saying much, they're all in stunned silence. They're all waiting for me to fuck up so they can blame the giveaway on me. Uh, I, as played with check, um, cause I'm not sure what to do in this spot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna say twelve lead.
Damn, I don't know what to do, the points are on the line, or I wanna click.
Oh, well, I'm already, I'm already.
You already clicked it?
No, I haven't clicked anything yet. I'm waiting for you, son.
Alright, I'm gonna check, fuck it.
He's going check, alright, ready?
I definitely think we need to leave here, the times you want to leave are when the board changes in a way that should be good for your range. And here, obviously I have lots of spades available, and also I have a lot of bottom pairs available that my opponent does not have in his range. Yes, of course, he has all the suited aces and suited kings and whatnot, but not all of them, right? Whereas I actually do have almost all of them. I don't have ace, king and ace queen, well, can't have ace queen, I don't have ace, king and maybe ace jack, cause I'll three bet those. But I do have, you know, all the other weaker ace X, I have all the king X, I have all the jack X, all the ten X, right? We're playing all of those spades. So I have a lot of flushes in my range, and also I don't mind leading with a five here either. And if my opponent did have a five, he may decide to check that back on the flop, although given a small bet size, he probably just bets with everything on the flop. So, this is a situation where I definitely think I need to lead, and either a small or a medium lead, like six thousand or twelve thousand is nice. Um, realize as you make any bet here, your opponent's gonna call with all their decent spades, all their queens, maybe even stuff like pocket tens with or without a spade. So you're gonna be getting called a lot, which means you need to be very prepared to fire again on the river. This time I checked though, and I think this is a clear mistake, so, so far in this hand, we messed up, I think, twice, I should have check raised the flop, and I should have. Led the turn and I don't know what's going on here, maybe I let my good kid opponent get in my head. He's one of the, known to be one of the best online players in the world, and that's not an excuse, that is, if anything, I need to be playing even more fundamentally sound and. This, this is a little bit weak and I'm pretty annoyed at myself that this happened. So check, check on the turn, as, as you should expect, right? Like I said, the five is really good for me. Which means that my opponent should be doing a lot of checking on the turn, just like I should have been doing a lot of betting. If your opponent should do a lot of checking, you should probably be doing a lot of betting, and you wanna be betting with hands that have no showdown value. And hands that have, that are essentially the nuts. Anyway, river's a queen, should we check, bet seven thousand, bet fourteen thousand, or bet twenty-one thousand?
Can you hear me, Tom?
Yeah, how many points did you get?
Uh, for that, I got eight, I mean, I'm down this, I'm down this for sure, I got three on the pre-flop, so I'm bracked.
We're good.
Yeah, you're good, you can't.
I got five for the check, god, uh, well, you know what I'm doing here, right? Cause lord, he checks the turn.
Well, yeah, that, as well as we're gonna be checking back some queen X on a turn, do we ever just lead the queen X? On the turn? After we just called, no, so here, you know, the flush got there, are we leading all of our flush draws? No. Um, so, this is actually pretty good for us, will we overbet a flush though, in this spot?
Never.
Probably not, so if we are overbetting, we're polarizing our range, hey, hold on one second.
It was madness on Saturday morning at the six's house.
God, kids, dude. Uh, but yeah, if we're not overbetting our flushes, we're kind of polarizing our own range, just having a queen X in our five X. You know, um, so I may be just making a value-ish looking bet, I'm here of about fourteen, it's probably gonna get it done.
Fourteen for me too, absolutely all day. Um, I don't think we need to go twenty-one, I think we just need to get everything that's better than six high to fold. Um, I don't think seven does that, um, but for, I'm fourteen all day. What do you guys think in the chat? There's a lot of you out there, who's betting what? Get them out, get them out.
I'm gonna say fourteen, hold one second.
Ooh, that five points on the turn hurt, twenty-one K, JP G's not skirt, throwing down the hammer. LV, you out there, what do you bet? Marlin, you out there, what do you bet? Kinda like twenty-one also, interesting, I do think we need to bet big, so I do think the answer's gonna be fourteen or twenty-one. Watch out, watch out, watch out, watch out, watch out.
Alright, did you click yours?
I did not, I was waiting for you.
I'm sorry, yeah, I had to take this hoverboard upstairs, got these kids, um, so I'm gonna, I'm going fourteen, I think.
Justin says seven K seems interesting, uh, going small block or bed, fold out the J high and worse.
Cause he probably is good enough.
Cause he's targeting junk, and all junk is folding for any bet size.
So these options are probably gonna be pretty close.
Uh, C Kisser says have to get the ace high call, get out the hay say calls, right? I'm kind of in that boat, that's why six is, and I said fourteen.
Yeah, I'm probably just gonna go fourteen, it feels, yeah, it feels good.
Feels good, man, I'm on fourteen too.
It feels like, yeah, it feels like just a value bet we would make, that we, I mean, we could try to polarize our range here and go. Overbet, maybe try to get him to call, just call off, I'm like. I'm torn between these two, but I'm gonna go fourteen, yeah.
Famous says there are flushes that would be nice to be able to fold out, I don't think flushes were folding out very much, um.
And flushes are betting turns.
Certainly not for seven K, and definitely betting turn because of the pair board. Uh, Marlin says they don't like the situation, I wouldn't be here, this just seems like we can't win, maybe just rip. We don't need to rip this bitch, like, if he's got nothing, seven or fourteen work. And if he's got anything, they're calling no matter what.
Yeah, it'd just be gross if he checked back quads or something like that on the turn, which he never does, and then you shove for all of it and get snapped off, you know, so. Fourteen K, let's do it.
Let's do it.
Well, now we cannot win. This is a pretty rough spot because obviously the opponent could just have a queen, right? If he did have a queen, he should definitely bet the flop.
Jaybird, you're a wizard.
Check behind the turn, so. It's always rough bluffing into a hand that could just be the effective nuts, he could also just have a hand like nines, same story, should check behind flop. I'm sorry, bet, bet flop, check behind turn and then call river. He can also have ace high, the major's aside a hero call, that said, I do think that we need to be bluffing here. I mean, of the hands we want to be bluffing, this is probably one of the main ones, this hand, six, four, eight, six, et cetera. Because this hand has literally no showdown value, if I had like ace of spades X, then I don't need to bluff, right? And really, king of spades X does not need to bluff, so in this scenario, I don't actually need to bluff every time. Um, with my whole range, so that means I really often should be bluffing with my total, with my hands that just cannot win at the showdown. So now in terms of sizing, I think we need to go small, because what are we trying to get to fold, right? We're trying to get king high or jack high or ten high to fold, so we're trying to get some pretty weak hands to fold, well, I'm not trying to get my opponent to fold pocket tens here. Or even ace high, cause I don't think he's gonna fold pocket tens or ace high. So, given I'm trying to get him to fold something pretty weak, I think we get to use a small sizing. And for that reason, I think seven thousand's gonna be the right bet size in this scenario. And yes, you're gonna get called by ace high, but don't expect any good player to fold ace high here, although, you know, maybe they'll surprise you every once in a while and fold to a small bet thinking, yeah, you're clearly trying to get value. If you're quote-unquote clearly trying to get value, then maybe they will every once in a while make a snug fold, especially if they think you're on the tighter side. This time we do go for seven thousand though, and our opponent pulls. It's funny, I've been making, um, the, over the last like five or six quizzes where we've been going through this three thousand dollar buy-in tournament, I don't think I've lost a hand. And, um, it, it's always great when that happens, because sometimes you just get hit by the deck and not only that, you're, all your bluffs work, and whatever that's. Going well, it's, it's whatever poker's going well like that is just amazing. Um, that said, these times don't come around all that often, and you better not waste them on the early levels of the poker tournament. Obviously, you don't need to pick when you're on hot though, and. All you can do is show up and play your absolute best, and I think I actually did mess up this hand a decent amount, I think I should have definitely checked raise flop. If I did not check raise flop, I should have led the turn, and, um, if I found myself to the river in this way, we finally got that one right.
Alright, you there?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, you know, Jaybird nailed it, and I think, uh. Seven K makes a ton of sense because of the range of targeting, you kinda said it, I kinda went with what I would normally do, but, uh, the seven K makes a ton of sense. And I just think like, when he went astray in the hand, it kind of made it hard to figure out what to do, because he didn't. Follow the system, you know, I mean, the system makes it easier to play when we check raise flop.
Yeah, exactly, or lead turn, like I think I'm leading turn a lot, um, but yeah, I really like that. He just expects his opponents to never fold ace high. So with that being said, he's just trying to fold out everything else. Way too weak to just check here, um, so just making a small bet, just trying to fold out king high, you know, jack high. Jack nine, so yeah, I like it, makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, literally, we're trying to fold out eight high, if he had like eight, six, you know what I mean, like.
Right, right.
Uh, yeah, interesting game, super interesting.
We, we got time for like another one here?
Uh, give me a sec, for some reason.
There's a cash game one. Is, is that a ca- yeah, there's a cash game hand, and then there's another. Oh, no problem, take it down.
If I click quizzes, it keeps logging me out. Alright, here we go, I'm back. I have mine sorted by tournaments, so I don't even see the cash ones.
Oh, okay, yeah, my, it was cash is, uh, five seventy-three, but we don't have to do that, he has another hand from this three K that we can do.
Cut off with a queen and jack.
Yep, that's it. Alright, so, ooh, look at this, you're not opening this. He just looked at this.
Under the gun one.
I am. So, let's see if he.
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You're already down on points in real life, now obviously, you're gonna cheat, but.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Alright, let's play it.
Let's do it.
Here we have the queen, jack, offsuit, under the gun plus one, playing eight-handed in a three thousand dollar buy-in tournament, we've been playing lots of pots. Should we fold, call, raise to thirty-eight hundred, or raise to forty-eight hundred?
I hear you.
Alright, go ahead, Tom, oh.
I'm gonna evolve and say that he should raise forty-eight hundred here.
I am going to cry if he says he's folding here, like, if he's like, yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament, and you are actually right. Then you just debate yourself. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say open of course, so I'm gonna go thirty-eight hundred here.
Uh, the problem is, is I think we are all almost a hundred picks deep, right? And so in my experience, when we're this deep, we should be going bigger. And when we get, as we get shorter in the tournament.
You know what, looking at this, uh, the average stack at this table is, I mean, you know, like eighty, he's eighty-eight bigs, eighty-eight bigs. There's one guy with fifty-six, I can see, um. Going three X, I'm just going thirty-eight hundred, and DJ Plays Poker says thirty-eight hundred as well.
Everyone in my chat says thirty-eight hundred, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do the, uh, executive decision and go forty-eight, cause I, I, I wanna beat you.
Somebody, yeah, so that's what it, well, you already got one up on me, so that's what it takes, right? You gotta take a different line.
You won last weekend, you son of a bitch. You know how competitive I am, alright, forty-eight hundred, let's see what happens.
Alright, cool.
And the reason is because queen, jack, offsuit is just not that great of a hand. Now, if our opponent or our table is, um, particularly tight, passive, we're not getting three bet at all, they're letting us run them over. Then, you know, maybe we can open it up, I don't think it's terrible to raise to thirty-eight hundred. But in general, queen, jack, offsuit, jack ten offsuit, queen ten offsuit, uh, king ten offsuit, maybe even ace nine offsuit. These hands should pretty much always be folded from the two early positions at an eight or nine-handed table, but, you know. We decided to splash around today. And a kid in the cutoff calls, flop comes ace, nine, eight, two clubs. Should we check, bet four thousand, bet eight thousand, or bet twelve thousand?
Alright, it happened, Tom.
I just wanna say for the record, that this is the best three-point score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold.
But you heard what he said, about the tables. This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses.
If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five dollar two K world, I mean, you know, the eleven dollar ten K. I'm opening this, yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life.
Oh, that's hilarious, and everybody's fifteen, so I get it.
Oh, I love it, uh, yeah, Justin in my chat said, but the answer is just fold. I got leveled, uh, yeah, yeah, so, alright, so as played, we raise, C betting this, you're always C betting this, we know each other too well.
I mean, it's not great, you know, when he does call from there, but we do block some of the ace-jack hands he would call with. Um, we block some of his straight draws he might float with, we have a gut shot that's not particularly good enough to check call. Um, you know, I, I, I think. I think I wanna, I think I wanna bet, of course, but, you know, we do have to have some bluffs on this board, um. Even though range advantage is pretty close here, cause we're gonna be, he's gonna be have a tight flating range. Um, so we're not like at a huge range advantage, but at the same time, yeah, I think we wanna see that. Cause he's gonna have all this, some suited aces in there as well, you know, he's gonna have ace ten, he's gonna be flating some ace jacks, ace eight, ace nine suited. Um, then he's gonna have some jack ten, tight hands, eights and nines. Uh, so maybe we, damn, man, when you think about that range, that's a lot of hands that could continue.
Two suits, two cards, nine and above, I'm checking.
I'm starting to think about that as well.
In one of my chat, Jaybird, do this, I'll say an eight K, anybody else out there got some opinions, get out there and put it out in the chat.
We got someone saying check here in mine, but I've knocked off. Oh, man. What are we doing here, so? You're checking?
I'll go with the group, uh, since they say eight K, but I, I'm checking. I'm sticking to my guns, they, J, JL ain't gonna trick me again.
Uh, so you're checking, um. Uh, so you're checking, um, yeah, man, this feels very close for me.
Jaybird says check to check raise. Interesting line. Definitely interesting line. Um.
I love it.
Yeah, cuz I kinda was just saying like the hands that I'm gonna check.
I'm gonna check here, because we just, I mean, with the club, we may have some more double barrels, but here we just literally are gonna go one and done so often. And I don't think we get a lot of folds by using a small bet. He still has some floats. And by going big, if, see, they reuse a bigger sizing or check, so I'm gonna go ahead and probably check this.
I'm on team check two. Uh, the question is, are we check raising or check floating, um? Cuz I'm definitely not check folding the gutter and the overs just to a C-bait, cuz he still has a, I mean, also.
I guess it depends on his sizing, right?
Sure, sure, sure. If he bombs the hell out of it, it makes it a little harder.
I mean, we're just, yeah, we can't, I don't know.
Just kinda, I'm just kinda assuming it goes the normal forty to sixty percent-ish, somewhere in that range. Um, check raising really interesting. I would, I, I, I think in game, I would find myself floating a lot. But I think, I was saying in the hand before, a lot of hands that we float with are better as check raises. I think a check raise here is super interesting. What do you do with? I mean, even Kings.
It's tough spots.
A nine.
I mean, yeah, he's gonna feel compelled to stab some of his King, uh, some of this, well, we block King, Queen, and King Jack, but he could still have some of those combos. His King tens, his under pairs may just stab.
Eight and nine, and then check back a Queen or a Jack, cuz we have showdown value now?
Yeah, um, I'm probably gonna go check on, I'm going check.
We're going check.
You gotta be controlling to catch up.
Ooh, look at him, he's trying to level me in the points here.
You know you wanna go twelve K, come on now.
I'm gonna stick with what I'm doing in game. Everyone in my chat says eight K, one eight K, two eight K. Alright, I'm going eight K, cuz that's what the chat says, fuck it.
He's going eight K, we're checking.
The two armies gonna go down together, let's do it.
I love it. Alright, guys.
In general, when you're out of position, you do want to do a decent amount of checking, but in almost all scenarios, you wanna be betting with your best made hands and your draws. And this is not a great draw, but it is a draw. And if, you know, Queen-Jack offsuit is a hand that you would normally not play, it kind of implies this hand's not even in your range every time, which means that when you do have this hand, you should probably just play it as it would make logical sense. And in this spot, I think that just means betting. You could check, the problem with checking is that if you check and your opponent bets, you just have to fold, which is always a bummer. So, in this spot, we either need to bet four thousand or eight thousand. I think four thousand's fine. We're really just trying to get our opponent to fold out nothing, right? And, um, I think that's gonna be the right play. If we start betting bigger, yes, we do get more folds immediately, but once we get called, we just have no potential to continue barreling. And also, if we bet eight thousand, we may induce more raises, perhaps even all-in raises for some of our opponent's draws, which would be a real bummer, cuz then I just have to fold. Whereas if I bet four thousand, maybe my opponent calls because they're getting good odds, and that allows me to get closer to showdown, or make a pair, or make a straight, that could win. So I think I like four thousand in general. Um, as your opponent's stack is getting a little bit shallower and shallower, or the bets are getting bigger and bigger in relation to the pot, or your opponent's stack, you always wanna make sure you're not setting your opponent up to have a pretty easy all-in. Like right here, if I bet twelve thousand, well, then our opponent may just jam or fold most of their hands, which would be bad for me, because I do have a decent amount of equity if our opponent has anything worse than a mace. So I do bet four thousand this time, the opponent does call. And the turn is a Jack of Spades. Should we check, bet six thousand, bet twelve thousand, or bet eighteen thousand?
Interesting. Alright, what did you get for that?
Six points.
I got eight.
You got eight?
Yeah.
Damn.
And we, and we both leveled ourselves, cuz you know, initially, when the hand started, he's like, I know you're betting, and I'm like, always betting like four K.
Right, you went, you took your line, and I took my, you took my line, I took your line, if you got more points, you bet.
Yeah, we just gotta play like our nor- like ourselves, like, yeah, in game, I think we just bet here. Um, like without the Queen of Clubs, it's not good enough to really check, call, ever, or anything like that, or Jack of Clubs, so. And we just wanna fold out some of his hands, we get enough cards to double barrel. Um, so yeah, this is interesting now.
Uh, yeah, yeah, weird spot, and this is another weird one, where two quizzes below, the JL deviated from what he would normally do, and I, I said this before, like, obviously, Jonathan's way better than I am. But, um, we do have similar styles, and so, um, if I had just stuck with the style and done what I normally do, I'd get more points. But he deviated, which made it really hard for me to play, which in turn tanked my quiz score, because he got here in ways that I don't ever get here, so I'm not sure how to navigate.
Yeah, going down these different nodes, you know, uh, it's certainly interesting. Uh, but yeah, now it's nineteen K in the pots, we got called, we have showdown value, um, six, twelve, eighteen, or check, guys. What do you guys think out there?
Martin says he's betting big, fire, fire, fire. Nudus says JL seems to be smaller bet sizing in the past, two quizzes, so he says eight K, but he likes twelve K. I am betting much smaller than eight K or twelve K. I am checking now, cuz I do believe we have showdown value.
Knockdog goes twelve K. Yeah, I'm more team check now, um. And another thing with this card, it does improve the equity of some of the hands he may come along with as well. Um, if he had Ace ten, he just called with, this is gonna be in his calling range, uh, he's now improved, you know? Uh, now he has a draw, he's never folding for two. Um, Ace seven now has a gut shot, Ace seven suited, um, he could've just had, Ace-Jack is pretty unlikely. So our bet, our objective here would be to bet and fold out draws and worse aces if we go twice.
Yeah, I mean, it's kinda hard to fold top pair in my opinion, so I'm, I'm assuming we're not gonna get a lot of ace X to fold. And when we barrel here, like, I think we're just getting worse to fold, and better's always coming along. I don't know. We could bet off the draws and deny equity, but, I mean, I, I feel like we have showdown value now. And I think we would play an ace this way as well, because the Jack's a bad card for an ace X here.
I mean, yeah, we have some Ace tins in our range, just some Ace Queen in our range, we're comfortable just check calling with, uh, cuz, you know.
Also, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, yeah, cuz it's just gonna be interesting, and, uh, if we try to triple barrel like Ace-King here, or Ace-Queen in this spot, right? Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And also, like, I think it's weird if we bet here and check turn, and he bombs river with a missed draw, we're in a really hard spot with the Jack. Cuz I, you know, if he's got missed clubs, and we bet here, he calls the missed clubs, and then we check river, and he bombs the shit out of it, it's gonna be hard to, to make a call.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can just check, and if he ever makes some small bets, we can call with our pair and gut shots. Um, as well, I, I'd expect him to check back some frequency, so yeah. If we check, are we calling a bet, someone says?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, depending on size, right? I mean, we have enough equity, he still has.
Second pair, a gutter, and two pair draws, might be good, yeah, I have to.
Right.
And not only that, but he still has worse hands that he's floating the flop with, that he's gonna try and take away on the turn, just cuz we checked, you know, we fired a C-bet and checked.
Right.
I don't, I think our hand's too good to fold.
Yeah, what's up, Ca- uh, Cabba? Thank you, I agree, this, I, I'm, I'm checking here, what's up?
We're checking in my chat.
Yeah, uh, what happened on flop? Someone says he just showed up, uh, flop, we bet four K. Um, we opened it, we opened it thirty-eight, we get called by the cutoff, we see bet to four K, he calls, and here we are on the turn with nineteen K in the pot. Here's the options, and we are scored upon these options. Here on pokercoaching.com, one of their quizzes.
If you're interested in signing up for poker, pubcoaching.com, X, M, P, C, in my chat, or in Six's chat, and you can get the link there to check out the free options. Or sign up for the premium, it's up to you, uh, but there is a free option for you, so X, M, P, C, to check it out. Banner in my little thing underneath the chat, in the stream, banner in Six's chat too, underneath his, underneath his chat in his stream, so you can get all the details there. Uh, we're checking.
Checking.
Let's do it.
Alright.
So the turn gives me a very clear marginal made hand, and when you have a very clear marginal made hand, you need to do a lot of checking. However, I remember this particular opponent was relatively call-happy. He really enjoyed calling. So against people who really like calling, a slight adjustment you can make is to bet, again, using a small size, because that's gonna allow you to just extract more value from your opponent's nines and eights, and perhaps draws if he has them. If you think your opponent's gonna be raising you a lot if you bet the turn, then you definitely wanna check, because you really don't wanna get raised here, right? They have a very clear marginal made hand. If we bet and get raised, it's really bad. But if you can get away with betting this turn, and your opponent will call you with pretty much any hand with a ten in it, any nine, any eight, a Jack. Notice we actually beat all the Jacks, right, cuz King-Jack probably folds the flop. If your opponent will call with a lot of stuff like that, and then just let you see a cheap showdown, betting becomes a pretty reasonable line. But in general, you're going to want to check. If we are gonna bet here, we don't wanna go too big, because remember, we're trying to get called by some pretty marginal stuff here, right? And when you're trying to get called by marginal stuff in general, you want to use a small sizing. So I do bet six thousand, leave on a call, so like I said, regular plays, just check and then check call. River is now the Five of Hearts. Should we check, bet eight thousand, bet sixteen thousand, or bet twenty-four thousand?
Marlin says, uh, Button has a huge range, I think we're ahead, we need to bet for value. The problem is, when you're betting for value, Marlin. Uh, give me one second, um, when you're betting for value, Marlin, uh, what are you getting called by that's worse? Just club draws. And so a lot of what's calling is gonna have us beat, and we're value timing ourselves. Um, and like I said, we have a made marginal hand, so we should be checking a lot. Um, Jonathan did bet though, and, uh, as played, I am a hundred percent checking now. And a hundred percent check call.
I mean, you don't think he wants to block bet in this spot, uh, ever?
Why?
I mean, is he ever gonna get value from anything worse, Jack ten, King nine?
He gets value from all the missed clubs.
And then those hands have a chance to open up the bet. We open up the betting to get bluffs sometimes as well. If we bet small, and he thinks it's a block bet, we can use a large sizing, turn some club draws, whereas if we check, we can always just check call, depending on sizings.
Yeah, check call any random, any normal-sized bet, and then, uh, we give all, we keep all his bluffs in there, and I don't value time myself against an ace.
Because he's just gonna snap you off like Ace-five got there as well. Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I don't see a point. Yeah, what do you guys think? I stand by the check now, decide what to do depending on the size of the bet. Uh, so it's a check and reevaluate, check call any reasonable-sized bet. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with that, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I'm a hundred percent. No question, pretty standard, pretty standard ABC solid poker.
Yeah, I agree.
Check and check, let's find out what happens.
So, now, we start in pretty much the same spot we were at on the turn, except for.
Good job, guys.
A hand with no showdown value, which will always fold to a bet. If I am going to bet here, I should definitely bet small, but even if I know my opponent's a bit of a calling station, I don't think we can justify betting here, just because it is possible our opponent has an ace, right? And if our opponent does have an ace, say it's a weaker ace, like Ace X-suited or Ace ten, he may not even value bet if I check. So I think this is a pretty nice spot to check and see what develops. I definitely do not think we need to bet here. So on the turn, we could keep betting, because our opponent could call with lots of draws and marginal pairs, hoping to improve. But on the river, a lot of those will fold if we bet again. So the adjustment here is to bet the turn, but not the river. So we check river, and our opponent bets forty-ish percent pot or so. Hmm, should we fold, call, raise to twenty-nine thousand, or go all-in?
Alright, you good?
I'm good. Uh, Marlin says I can get behind a check raise here, or I bomb and make it hard for him to call with a lone ace. I would say, Marlin, I wouldn't try so hard to get top pair to fold, cuz they don't fucking fold.
Ooh, Marlin is a maniac, he must be. Fire, fire, big bet.
He's, uh, he's beavis.
Fire!
Uh, yeah, I mean, there's no reason to check raise, either, he's got an ace or he doesn't. Martin says jam. Fuck, fuck your ace.
Yeah, this turns into, like, he shouldn't, hold on one second.
Uh, Kiss says, uh, I'm just calling, can't see stacks, says though, it's just a call. We started with eighty bigs, this guy started with forty bigs. Uh, this is a clear call for me. How strong is a jam here? Strong, but the problem is, is we're still not getting an ace. Especially cuz we checked the turn, like, what aces do we check, turn, check, raise, river? What aces do we do that with, Marlin? I don't think there's that many aces out there we do that with.
Yeah, so yeah, for me, this comes down to, uh, just a call or a fold. I don't know what the purpose would be in making any of these raises. We really don't really make too many, I mean, we make his bluffs fold, right, like, then we beat by just calling anyway.
Yeah, Tavis says, why don't we check twice? We check because we have showdown value now, and we don't wanna give value to an ace. Um, Martin says, I don't think I'm checking the turn, but we did check the turn, so we have to see the story we have here.
Yeah, I mean, some of his aces, like, let's think about that, like, really, it would be pretty thin for him to bet with an ace. Anyway, when we go bet, bet, check, it would be very thin for him to be bet Ace-seven here. It would be very thin for him to bet. Maybe even Ace-ten would be fairly thin here as well, um. You know, considering we not, we can't really bet Ace-King, Ace-Queen three times on this kind of configuration, we return it into a check call. So his bet does feel like a bluff to me.
I just think our hand is too strong to fold.
Yeah, 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 it feels like, I mean, it's too strong to fold, given that his betting range here, it, it's pretty thin, right? I mean, if he's betting with a single pair of ace, that's pretty thin. Um, he may be raising, you know, turn with some of his two pairs here. Um, and you know, given that information, yeah, I think we just turn this into a call.
Alright, let's see what happens.
Let's see, fellas.
You all know me, I'm a bit of a calling station. I do not enjoy folding when we have some showdown value and the draws missed. And in this scenario, well, a lot of draws missed. Our opponent would very likely call a small flop and turn bet with their draws that have some showdown value, like any hand with a ten, uh, perhaps even the good flush draws. And like I said, the opponent may not even value bet with a hand like a marginal ace, because I would definitely check this river with all of my aces, all my one pair aces. So, for that reason, I think I need to call here. Obviously, if my opponent knows I'm a bit of a calling station, then bluffing would be pretty ridiculous, but I do think there are a decent amount of hands the opponent can have here that do need to bluff. Like King-high with clubs, right? That's a pretty obvious one. What about a hand like ten-eight suited? That called the flop, called the turn, now probably feels inclined to bluff the river to try to get me off of a Jack or a nine, or maybe a weak ace. Um, maybe our opponent has a hand like, really. Any, any hand that's probably a nine or worse, at least consider bluffing, and the opponent could have that. For all I know, the opponent decided to float twice with King-Queen for no real reason. Maybe the opponent had, uh, pocket sixes, decided to call the flop in the turn, maybe pocket sevens, right, something like that. It, it's always interesting when you're trying to find bluffs, cuz you do wanna be realistic about it, but you also have to realize we're playing against a kid who, you know, who knows what the guy's actually doing. Whenever you're giving me great pot odds, notice I have to put in thirteen to win a pot that's going to be fifty-eight, need to be good like one in, what, one in five times? We're probably good one in five times here, so I, I typically lean towards calling. And this time, the opponent had the King-seven of clubs, so notice if we bet bigger on the flop, perhaps our opponent would have raised. If we bet bigger on the flop, our opponent maybe would have jammed over our turn bet, but instead, we gave him good odds, he called. And we even extracted a little bit of value, and, um, this worked out about as well as it possibly could.
Alright, that was good.
Yeah, yeah, I played it right, and, uh.
We could've aced that if we just, that was good, though.
I kinda aced that if I just stuck with what I always do.
Yeah, the standard line, well, you would've folded, and then you would've found a C-bet, but yeah, with, of the, uh, small C-bet, so. No, I think that was, uh, he made every good point, like, we, we're kinda hitting on before that. It's just gonna be really, really thin for him to be betting any single pair of aces on this river. And had he had any of the other two pairs, he's probably gonna be raising for value for a variety of reasons on flop or turn versus our range.
Absolutely, cuz there's too many draws out there, he wants to give value and push out, you know, give him a price.
Yeah, that, and he can, I mean, he can just target, like, he can stack us when we have Ace-King or something like that, or Ace-Queen, so he can get value from the top of our ring, if he were to have sets in his two pair. So when he doesn't do that, he's likely gonna have a lot of draws or weakish marginal hands, um, as well. So, yeah, I think that was, uh, I think we figured it out, I like the way we all played that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, like, and, uh, check calling turn, check, or checking river, turn, check calling river. Especially cuz I, like, I agree, I think all his good ace hands are two pairs or betting the turn, so he doesn't have two pair. And when we bet the river, we're only getting called by an ace.
That's it.
That's it. And when we check, we can call, because now, sometimes we're gonna run into an ace, but he has bluffs as well, and we keep all his bluffs in there. And if he checks back and shows an ace, we pocket roll, it's great. And if we check back and shows an ace, we pocket roll, it's great. It's great.
Yep, agreed.
Awesome.
Alright, well, yeah, that's all I have time for, uh, here today. I don't know, I mean, I think I got, I won that one, but what was, who won the first one? I don't even remember.
Oh, the first one was a tie, and then I definitely won the second one. I don't know what's going on with poker with my browser right now.
And I won the third one.
So, it's a tie.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each, each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten-dollar free roll for each, or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes.
Uh, I mean, everybody wins. I think both chat, you know, they were active, they were, you know, in their guessing, so, yeah, let's, let's just kinda reward these guys for being active and being a part of this.
Okay, cool. Ten-dollar giveaway, ten-dollar giveaway. Uh, before we do that, guys, thanks for showing up, thanks for being evolved, uh, if you liked this, I hope you did. If you have any suggestions on how we can make this better, um, Six and I both definitely open to suggestions. We're trying to figure out some ways to make it more valuable for you, so if we could figure out a way to get a leaderboard for the scores that you guys put out there. Um, we're working on that. If you guys have any ideas for that, let us know, cuz we're, we're racking our brains, just trying to find, make it more entertaining uh, for you guys. X-Match Point PC in my chat, or in Six's chat, to get links to check out this stuff and take some quizzes on your own. Thank you, my man, it was a pleasure as always.
Likewise, man, and remember, guys, it's free. You get twenty of them free for signing up and access to other free materials on the site, and there's a shitload of stuff. And it's pretty solid, man, and another thing, uh, we're trying to coordinate this to be an every Saturday thing around this time, uh, somewhere around this timeframe. At least together, and then we're, uh, obviously both going to be doing, you know, one or two a week, uh, before some sessions with no delay, uh, individually. So stay tuned for that stuff, so I think that'll be good, and, uh, yeah, think, oh, our own quizzes coming up on the site potentially today, if not tomorrow, so check those out. I think that's another cool reason to check it out.
Yeah, quizzes for me, quizzes for Six, are gonna be added to this as well, hopefully, we'll say within the next week.
Yep.
Alright, guys.
Alright, guys.
So, Toe Stream, stay tuned, we'll do that giveaway. Six is on my hangout, and I'll talk to you, I'm sure, later today, cuz we always.
Yep, so, yeah, alright, buddy, good talking to you, man, it was fun, see you.
Another study session in the books with our best bud, Crazy Sixes. Hope you guys enjoyed it. Make sure you stay tuned Saturdays, we are doing them live on Twitch. You can find the links to follow me on Twitch right over here. Also, follow us on social media to see what we got going on, the Toe Army Live, to watch us as we play, and everything else that we got going on, giveaways and all that stuff. If you like this type of video, hit the like and the subscribe button here on YouTube. You can also get all those links down below in the description. We got pokercoaching.com, thank you to them for providing the quizzes, and, uh, for promoting the stream and all of that stuff. Here is the pokercoaching.com link for that as well, and, uh, we'll see you next week, guys. Peace.